Yeah, I was, I would change it.
It's lotion.
Okay, sounds good. So we will go ahead and get started. And.
Where's David?
You're fine.
Yeah, David.
All right, so we will call to order, City Council Business Meeting for Thursday, August nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. It is six oh one P M. Lindsay.
Councilmember Lester.
Here.
Baker.
Here.
Reva.
Here.
Cool.
Here.
Livingston, Mayor Tom Phillips.
I am here as well. We do have a quorum, so we will move on. So for those on the Zoom meeting, if you want to speak to an agenda item, go ahead and unmute your microphone and speak up during public comment when, when asked. You can also let us know you have some input by raising your Zoom hand or by flagging us in the chat box. We'll then recognize you during public comment. Also, don't forget to mute your microphone after you've made your comments. There is a time delay on YouTube meetings, so we will not respond to questions that may be texted to people in council chambers. If you'd like to ask any questions during, if you have, like to ask any questions during the meeting, please either attend in person or attend via the Zoom meeting. And our next item on our agenda is pledge allegiance, so would you please rise and say.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item number three is approval of the agenda. Would anybody like to move any of the consent agenda items to the regular agenda? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion.
Second.
Okay, got a motion by Reva, second by Baker. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same. And motion carries. So item four is a dedicated work session. So this dedication, dedicated work session is for mayor, council, and staff. We expect it to last approximately one hour. And the work session for tonight is discussion of the food truck ordinance, review, and enforcement. So Luke, Paris, Chief Staples, and City Clerk Lindsay Offenberger have assembled some information to share with City Council. City Attorney Jim Dory is also going to provide some insight. I understand there's been some confusion about where food trucks can operate. And when they are required to operate with a license or a permit, it makes a difference if they attempt to park on private property versus city right of way. And I believe that is also makes a difference if the customers are paying for the food or if the truck was hired to cater an event. So I believe that there's also some concerns by council that city staff should be taking a more active enforcement approach. And so we're going to discuss that, too. So City Council staff's here to explain the ordinance and absorb some feedback. So please be prepared to share your thoughts about why you think the food truck ordinance is important and what degree of enforcement is needed. So we'll go ahead and turn it over to Luke, Chief Staples, and.
Yeah, so I'm going to take the first few slides. Luke Harris is going to jump in. Chief Staples will jump in. So we put together just a agenda. We're going to go over the background. What is a mobile food unit? Who does the ordinance apply to? What does a license cost? And what's the process for a license? Who is exempt? And what's the enforcement looks like currently? And then answer any questions. Feel free to ask questions as we are going through the. So back in the spring of two thousand and twenty, the city saw an increased interest in mobile food trucks. And it actually heightened during COVID nineteen. We did not have an ordinance at that time addressing food trucks. The city also wanted to protect the brick and mortar buildings, restaurants, obviously, to ensure fair competition. Council directed staff to draft an ordinance, which they did by looking over other cities' food truck ordinances. And they created the ordinance that we now have in our code. It was intended, at that time, to not affect the ice cream truck, as they would still operate under a pedlar permit. The first reading was approved in June of two thousand and twenty, with one revision. Council asked that staff change the footage requirement from another restaurant to three hundred feet from one hundred feet at that time. So how has the ordinance worked so far? We currently have one licensed vendor, Fo Wheels and Sushi. We do have one other vendor in the licensing process, which is Grounds Around Town. And staff is continually working on enforcement measures and how to better the ordinance. So what is a mobile food unit as far as staff is concerned? In general, it's a place where food is made and prepared and sold to the public. So that could be a hot dog stand, a rolled ice cream truck, your typical food truck of various different foods, and prepared beverage service. And again, this would not include a traditional ice cream truck that sells pre-packed items. So they're not preparing any food. They're just selling a frozen treat to someone. Um, still mine, Luke? I think so. Yeah.
I think you took mine.
I did?
Yeah, you're all right. You did good. You're doing good. You're killing it.
So who does it apply to? It applies to any mobile food unit that meets the requirements outlined in the ordinance. They are only allowed on non-residential properties, except in the case of an approved residential block party or private catering arrangement, as long as those events are, meet other city code requirements. They must be on a paved surface unless they're approved as part of a special event permit. And they should not ever be on public or private sidewalks unless approved as part of a city-sponsored event. Yeah. Okay, okay. So what does a license cost? And what is the licensing process? We have a one-year license. That costs two hundred and fifty dollars a year. It's currently not prorated as the ordinance is written. So if someone were to apply in July for a license, they would still be charged the two hundred and fifty dollars and have to repay that money in January. Or we do have a one-to-three-day license for seventy-five dollars. Currently, vendors fill out an application for a license and turn it into me. There's a lot of requirements with that license. They have to have a location where they will sell their state or county inspection certificates, vehicle registration, photographs of all sides of the food unit, proof of insurance with certain amounts, and naming the city of Norwalk as a certificate holder, written consent from the property owner allowing their unit to be on that property, and a criminal history report. So when I get that information along with their fee, I pass it on to community development for zoning approval and the P D for the background checks approval. If they don't give me a background check at that time, the P D will run that, which can slow up the process. And then if there are no issues that arise out of that process, then I issue their license. And who is exempt? So currently, under the code, if you're not, if you don't fall under one of these exempt categories, you're required to have a license. And those categories are a catering business, grilling and food preparation activities of a brick and mortar establishment on their premises for immediate consumption by patrons or their employees, concession stands that are associated with sports or recreational venues, city-sponsored events held on city property, and participants in local farmers markets. So if you don't fall under one of those categories, they should be applying for a license.
So that second bullet point, just as a clarification, that's if Casey's wanted to grill out for their employees on their property.
Yeah, or even for patrons.
Even for their customers.
Or even for their customers.
Yeah, yeah. But it would have to be immediately consumed, and it would have to be on their premises.
Or groups such as the Lions or the Park or something.
Well, that's what, how does that?
That would be different according to that.
The owner of the place, so if, like, one of the banks wanted to grill out for customer appreciation day or burgers before the football game.
Yeah, things like that, that would be exempt. Or if Fairway wanted to have a grill out front where they were selling hamburgers.
Fairway does that very often.
So they are allowed to do that. And that's an exemption. So they are allowed to do that. So currently, what does enforcement look like? The ordinance states currently that police officers, code enforcement officers, or the police chiefs designees have the authority to issue citations for violating the code and have the discretion to enforce as either a simple misdemeanor or a municipal infraction. Other options, and this is, these are options that staff has come up with, is at night, is it an officer, you know, writing down the license plate and the, and the name of the food unit and notifying community development during the day? Would it be complaint-based or from someone patrolling? Should we be shutting them down? What's the penalty? How does that work? And who writes the ticket? So those are really kind of questions that staff is wanting to get answered from council.
Yeah, let's, yep, and then we can come back. There we are.
All right, why don't I go back, because apparently you had a question on this one?
Well, even before that, where you were talking about, for example, different people will have a birthday party or a big party, not a registered block party, but they just pull up on the side of the street.
That would be violating the current, even if they personally paid for it, it would be violating the current laws, because they're in a residential area.
So even as a catering.
If they're in a residential zoned area, so they would be violating.
It would be because they're on, they're parked in a public open space. If they hold that same unit into the driveway and we're doing that for the event, then it would be allowed for this.
Okay, so that's.
So you couldn't argue that it was a catered, they were catering that event?
You, if they were on the street, you couldn't argue that it was being catered, because it, the code's just straight. You can't park on public streets to do it.
Unless it's a block.
Unless it's a block, the street.
Correct.
So that's fine.
The street's blocked. The way I read this, if the street is blocked, it's no longer public. It's privately held for the time of the.
So thinking of that example, so you, you're envisioning a scenario. So that would happen typically a weekend during the evening. How would you envision the enforcement?
I would suspect that any license holder would have a sticker or something on their, on the vehicle itself. So a police officer could literally walk up, not bother anyone, and just see, oh, look, there's a two thousand and twenty-one sticker on this mobile unit.
The ordinance currently states that, that their license should be visible to all people at the time that they are serving food.
Yeah.
Or drink.
And granted, they have to have one if they're doing it in West Des Moines. They have to have one if they're in Des Moines, wherever they're licensed. And so the problem is, how is the first time? How do we educate?
Yeah, so assuming that they're in this location, they don't, they're not licensed, they shouldn't be on the road.
I, I believe that it is bad for city business to have the police department be the reinforcers of city code issues like this. Same reason we shouldn't have the police department forcing grass that's too tall. I think it's a bad image for the city. I just don't think it's appropriate use of the police department. But at the same time, I don't feel, I certainly feel as if the police department should help or provide support to code enforcement employees who are out there doing this. So regulation and monitoring food trucks as, as businesses operating the city that may or may not be following the rules, the lead people involved in that ought to be code enforcers. Now, understanding that code enforcers go home at four thirty generally, and the police do not, and that food trucks operate past four thirty, in those situations, the police can easily go and verify that there was somebody there that was possibly violating the ordinance, notifying the code enforcers, hey, that was this issue. And then they can go out and deal with it, whether it's a warning or a citation of some sort after the fact. That makes good sense. I don't think it's a great idea for the police to wade in and stop a non-permitted block party with a food truck happening to be there violating the, sitting in the street and shutting them down in the middle of their operation. We can handle that later. That's worth it. So enforcement is multifaceted, but I, I believe that once the majority of the food trucks that come here, it's generally same ones over and over again, understand and have the permit, then the enforcement issue kind of fixes itself.
Do you think, would it be appropriate for a police officer just to walk up, not seeing the sticker or anything mentioned? You really do need a permit. I'm not going to give you a ticket or anything, but you need to contact the city clerk. You need to contact Jane Paul, whoever, to get a permit going forward and then walk away.
In most circumstances, yes, somebody who's fought the rules multiple times and not getting a permit, not doing what we ask, or we know, then at that point, certainly, we need to take a heavier hand. But for the most part.
Just the notifications on.
And then forward that information to a code enforcer who can follow up later and explain to them the rules, help send them down the right path to get the permit, help them come see Lindsay. That's.
I agree with everything Chief Staples said. And I prefer that the police not be asked to get out. That's, makes you guys look like bad guys. I mean, nobody.
Well, they're the only ones that would be there, is my point.
Well, no, but if it was.
We have no idea if they're in a neighborhood in Livingston Heights or whatever.
Right, but what I'm saying is if the officer just takes down the truck number, name, and, and community development follows up the next day, a lot of times, it's just people don't know that they needed to do that.
Yeah.
And then community development would be tracking how many times they had to call the same truck. If it's three times, then maybe three strikes you're out, then you.
Now, I can also envision a time where somebody is not following our rules and is knowingly violating the rules, and the code enforcer wants to speak to them in the middle of their illegal operation. And it's after, it's whatever time of day. The police department would certainly come along in that instance with the code enforcer to be supportive. The face of the enforcement just needs to be a code enforcer versus a police officer.
Stephanie, when I think back to experiences of dealing with people on code enforcement issues, my experience has been if somebody gets a letter or something from the city, they tend to be more frustrated than saying, why didn't somebody just come and talk to me?
What, I've seen a phone call.
Well, I, part of what I'm saying is, I think that generally, the people that are running these businesses, and I think a police officer would be well received, to say, hey, just let, you know, I need to get a permit as more of a courtesy versus us going through the letter.
Well, I don't disagree. And Elliot has made a list of all the known food trucks that have come in. And once we get this ordinance straightened out, it's easy for them, for code enforcement, to call them and, or contact them, how they do that, and say, all right, listen, you need a permit. Stop doing what you're doing until you have it. And then we can process.
Well, the flip side is, it's primarily two or three places. I'm not, I'm not, I'm concerned about the ones that are popping in the residential areas occasionally. But there's outskirts, Juana, maybe one other place that I've seen that hosts, hosts food trucks all the time.
And some churches.
And to me, those are the, those businesses are encouraging these big places to come in that don't have frickin' mortar here in town, aren't committing anything to our town. They're just coming in and taking our money and running. You know, I would gamble that we're probably not even getting the sales tax dollars. They're probably reporting it all as Pope County sales tax dollars, and it's all going Pope County credit in the end. So this is me just saying, I think you could identify the three, two or three places that are happening. I know those two up top of my head. I was thinking there was a third that.
Belsham Church.
Belsham Church. I mean, you could talk to those three landowners, business owners, and tell them, hey, every truck you bring in is expected to follow the city rules. And if they're not following the city rules, I think there seems to be a fine on them as well, because I think them hosting it is the problem, for me, the problem. Because there's no reason that Norwalk businesses should be encouraging non-Norwalk businesses to come to town and take business away from other Norwalk businesses.
Maybe there's a communication through the Norwalk chamber? I mean, just so everybody knows, all businesses know?
Tell you that one of those is not a member of the Norwalk chamber and probably wouldn't read anything.
But if we notify the chamber, and what about notifying all commercial businesses in Norwalk? If you invite a food truck here, they need to be licensed. Here is a license or an application.
That's, here's where to find it. I, I don't even, I, yeah, I don't know that we have to go quite that extent. But I just think that that's, for me, that's where the issue's kind of risen, is it's come out of really those three places that it brought in.
And it would make enforcement of it less complicated, easier to understand for the officer. In the Juana situation, I don't know the answer, but I believe that Juana had the ice cream truck and then allowed people to come order, and then Juana paid for it.
Nope, that was not what they were doing.
If the patrons pay, then it's a food truck.
It was a food truck. And, and for me, this is also saying that I don't like this catering exemption where that's a food truck. They're not catering. Catering is preparing off-site and bringing food in. Catering is not one person paying for it all, because that's the way around.
After spending two hours going over this ordinance today, the definition of catering needs to be put in, so we can, we can say that.
Because the ribbon cutting that had two non-Norwalk businesses catering itself, they weren't catering. They were preparing all the food to order onsite. They didn't cater that. That's not catering. They don't have catering. No, they didn't charge. So it was catering under their rules. And that's what I'm saying is that catering, catering is not what, bringing a food truck in and doing made-to-order things.
But they're not charging for individual items.
Where that falls under and is under number one section, it says, shall be unlawful for any person to engage in the sale of food or beverages to the public from a mobile food unit within corporate limits. And I guess when this was written, the attention was, at least with staff talking about it, was that that would be individual sales, not, you know, if I wanted to have a graduation party with an ice cream truck to show up, park in my driveway, and say, okay, everybody's graduation party, they have their ice cream.
And so come get a seventy-five dollar license.
See, but I don't think this covers that.
Yeah, but just, that's what I'm saying, is that that needs to be covered, because you're taking, we have businesses that have supported, businesses that buy a building, rent a building, are putting buildings in town, and we're not supporting them by allowing other entities to come in and not pay anything to do business in our town. They're not, these places aren't paying anything.
I'd like to comment on a couple of things, if I could. I've kind of been sitting back here listening. And first, I agree with the police chief. He's the victim of having a twenty-four-hour operation. And speaking from experience, I know that anything that's inconvenient for another city department will end up his responsibility. They do not want to come in after hours. That's a fact, the law. Okay? Is that appropriate? No. And police departments for years have been saddled with lock and toilets, you know, checking graft. I swear to God, it's true. Those are all true stories. And things that have no business being assigned to police. Is anybody going to live or die if a food truck doesn't have a license? No. I mean, so it doesn't rise to that level, okay? But they can provide information. They're out there. They can look, they can see, they can give the information to the enforcement people that can follow it up the next day. And then another, I would be hesitant to tell people what they can do on their own property with their own time, and who they hire to come in to give away gifts, which is food in this case, right? I mean, my God, we still got some private property, right? Now, I understand, we want to protect our business. I want to protect our business. But we need to be fair to both sides, right? We can't go so far the other way that we're going to tell my next-door neighbor that, you know, he can't have somebody come in, pull in his driveway, and give food away at a party that they've got going on. So somewhere in the middle of that, David, is probably as close to a solution as we're going to get. But I'd be hesitant to go that far over there. But I think the proper place for enforcement belongs to the code officer. Okay, that's the appropriate place for enforcement. Now, they can assess if there's something that's going to get out of hand, right? If the code officer comes up and says, you got to move that junk car, and the guy comes out with an AK forty-seven, you'd probably expect to see a police officer come by, right? But he shouldn't be the one that's driving up there measuring their grass, right? That's a code enforcement officer's job.
And I think you're going too far down the rabbit hole on the enforcement side. So.
I'm telling you.
But, but no one's saying.
Starts here, and then it just gets going.
Oh, yeah. I, I'm saying, we're talking food truck style. I'm not talking anything. I, I agree with you that they shouldn't be out there measuring grass for that. That's, that's something that can wait till the next day for the code, code people.
Don't get the food truck.
And I don't, it can. Are they going to be there the next day? How are we going to get the information on the food truck to the code people? I'm not saying they need to stop and shut it down. I'm saying a photograph and, and license plate information and name would be plenty to give, whatever you put on that.
They, they can easily do that, and they can provide it to the code enforcement officer.
But you're making it sound like they shouldn't have to even do that. You're saying they shouldn't have to do anything.
No.
That doesn't fall within.
I said, because they're out twenty-four hours, okay? But we just have to be careful not dumping a bunch of stuff on there.
And, and I'm not saying they need to be the enforcers. I'm saying that if they see it, they should be able to take the picture and pass it on, and then it should be done.
And we'll agree on that.
And right now, that's not happening. Nothing's happening. There's no enforcement whatsoever at this. We've had zero enforcement on this.
Have we had any enforcement on this, to anybody's knowledge, or?
Yeah, so the first time, David, that you brought it up, I, the next day, printed copies of the ordinance and the applications for the, I printed ten and gave them to Elliot, and he was to send them out, and I do believe he did, to the seven.
I think it was only four, when we came down and we, we listed out what we knew.
Food trucks that circulate, I do believe. And then I think he went on vacation, and he was back on the tenth.
Sometime when I was gone, yeah.
Yeah, and yeah. So I don't know what's happened since then with your department, Luke, but we have one in process. We're just waiting on a couple other things to come through for the application for that. We did have another that came in and paid and didn't finish their application and called me today and withdrew and wanted their money back. So they decided to not.
Had they operated their food truck in the meantime and decided they don't want to do it?
It was called Two Old Shacks.
Yeah, that's the one that I think I just sent you, Luke, operated their food truck last night.
At outskirts? But that was called Grill something.
Yeah, they weren't gonna, she had told me where they were going to operate it. It was here in town. It was not outskirts. I can tell you that.
I was curious, because, because in my, I'm curious if they filled it out and then decided against it because they already did their whatever that they were going to do.
Oh, okay. Well, she, they were going to pay for a whole year. They were going to go to a place up on Sunset, but they did withdraw theirs. So that might have been one, maybe, that Elliot had reached out to. So that would be three total, but.
It was off, off the grid, off the grid.
I mean, it, it, to me, it really gets down to the business owners that, that are encouraging these trucks to come into their properties that I think would need to enforce. Something with them, because if they're willingly allowing unlicensed food trucks to come to their property, to me, that's the issue. And I don't know what better way to.
This thing with outskirts, allow that if it's across the street from the chicken? It's not in our city.
That's the whole three hundred foot thing.
Yeah, I don't know that would affect. I don't think we would require.
Because you wouldn't reach out to an out-of-town business.
Yeah.
So you wouldn't be reaching out to the. So you wouldn't be reaching out to the chicken basket if it's okay. You would just be saying, okay, there's nothing within three hundred feet.
Yep.
And that's fine. You had said no pro-rata of the licensing. I think we need to come up with a schedule of like quarter one, it's two fifty, quarter two, it's two hundred, quarter three, it's one fifty, quarter four, it's one hundred. It's not even so much per quarter, but I think that's a fix to that, cause if it's a calendar year, I was in my mind envisioning a one-year license regardless.
Right, no, it's.
But if you're gonna do a calendar year thing, then I think it needs to be pro-rata so that it's and, and it doesn't have to be equal pro-rata, but I'm just saying come up with a schedule of if you, if you apply on December fifteenth, you're still paying a hundred dollars regardless of. Does that make sense? In my mind, that's the, the piece, cause then they're turning around and coming in on January one and getting a new license for the new year. I think that's fair to both sides at that point, so.
Yeah, and we might have to.
The key still bothers me because I agree there's private rights, but I also tell you that if you're bringing in a competitor to, if, if you live right over here on Main Street and, and you've got two restaurants right there, and you bring in a competitor and that competitor doesn't have to go through the food, mobile food unit permitting for their catering event, I think that creates an issue in my mind as far as. I, I agree there are private rights, but I also sit back and say, I don't know made to order on an individual basis versus catering to me is, it's prepared offsite and it's brought in, cooked or
Catering can be.
Cooked, brought in, repaired. It just needs to be warmed up or whatever.
Catering can be made to order on a lot of different levels. Drinks, food, you name it.
I think the problem you'll run into with catering is I think the businesses will just fill out a street closure application instead of just hosting it in their parking lot.
But then that has to come through us and we can.
That's true.
To, to that stuff, I just wanted to add a little bit of, like, our philosophy when we wrote this, when, when I was working with Elliot on where do we, where do we say you can and can't do things and stuff was A, you know, trying to protect some of our, our commercial districts, so not wanting things to pull up right in front of the buyer pizza and all that stuff. B was the residential stuff, not wanting somebody to show up in front of your house and then all these people are coming to buy things. And a big portion of that was similar to home occupations was you don't want to have in the middle of Blooming Heights, a now restaurant essentially set up, and then now everybody from Norwalk's driving down your little cul-de-sac to get their fish sandwich or whatever. So the idea behind the, the caterer, understanding that doesn't necessarily jive with what your definition is, but the idea of a food truck showing up being a caterer was it's not causing that traffic. It was, you're going to this person's event, you were going there, and it's not gonna generate extra traffic because Joe Blow, that saw on Facebook that food truck's gonna be here, is not deciding to go get their, their hamburger out on somebody's driveway. So that was kind of the philosophy there was, it's okay for that action to happen because it's a contained thing to that property as opposed to inviting other people to come through. Other thing I just want to note to all this stuff, I like what Greg said a lot about the enforcement stuff. We can certainly take information from the PD and follow up on that. The thing I would note with that is the most challenging part of doing that code enforcement is the ninety-five percent of the time you try to get a hold of somebody. And not being there to be able to talk to the person and say, that you're in violation of this, this is why you need to do this, here's the application, is going to prolong how long we get that person to compliance. I mean, it's all the way from grass to junk, you know, just getting, so you send somebody a letter, they don't read it. You call the phone number they got, they don't answer it. And if our code people aren't out there to say, hey, I see your grass is too short or too long, get it mowed, or hey, you're operating the food truck in the wrong spot, we can take that information, but it's just gonna make that process take longer, you know, and we'll do that. And I, I don't, I'm not saying that making the PD be the ones to do that's the right answer either, cause certainly I'm sure they've got better things to do. It's just, that's a fact of if we follow that process, it's not gonna be like, hey, I saw a food truck in my neighborhood yesterday and we're gonna immediately have a resolution to it the next day.
David's talking about three or four food trucks.
It's a handful. I mean, it's, it's a handful or a handful of places that are hosting.
Can't we, can't we authorize code enforcement officer to come out if the police officer calls him up there and says, hey, we got a food truck out there? Can't we do that?
And he goes. I can authorize overtime for that, I suppose, yes.
But, but I mean, yeah.
For the lawnmowers, a lot of times people are working during the day. You gotta go at night to talk to them anyway.
No, you don't really talk. A lot of times it's a phone conversation with those folks or in, in those instances, we go out to the property because it's an issue at the property. And so maybe to what David's saying is maybe part of it is more, we need to look at as an issue with the property, not necessarily the food truck. Because in the, if you're trying to make it analogous to, to the grass too long, we go out and we put a notice on somebody's front door, says your grass is too long, you've got forty-eight hours to mow it. We start the clock. Forty hours later, we have someone mow it. And so if the concern is that Luana has done something and we noticed it and Greg tells me tomorrow morning that, hey, this thing was out there at nine o'clock at night and we looked at it and it wasn't allowed per code, we could then go out there and slap, slap a sticker on Luana's door, I guess, or whoever, you know.
But the problem with that is commercial properties are one thing, but I can tell you that in our neighborhood, probably three times in the last recent months, somebody has a birthday party for their child, says, oh, the pizza truck's gonna be here for the party. Come on over if you want to buy a slice.
Sure.
Or we have the roll check, so you're gonna slap the sticker on the resident store that's.
And that's, that's the issue, is come over and buy a slice, not come over and let me buy you a slice. And that's what's happening.
And they're in the street, too.
They are in the street. And so it is causing traffic, cause it isn't a block party. It's just somebody's private birthday party. I don't know whether the truck was parked in the driveway or not, cause I didn't go over.
Now, what I, Greg, what you mentioned, I, I thought made a lot of sense. You said it's not going to be a first instance, that you're gonna react to community development and it's gonna get to the point where they say, listen, we've tried to contact these people three times, we've sent them letters, we've told them not to operate, and then you get a complaint, hey, this is the fourth time. What I heard you say is at that point, it probably gets elevated for enforcement where you would be willing to help out community development after hours.
We're always willing to help out and be a resource. Can't track them down, we have ways to find people. Just saying.
Do we want to do that with the first violation?
Like.
Probably would have that.
And mine is, is I'm all game, giving them the warning or giving them the chance to fix it and rectify it, but. Yet I think that reaching out to the couple places that are hosting them is more important than.
Yeah, we, we, we wrote an order of responsibility clause into fireworks ordinance just for this kind of reason, because it was difficult to figure out who was responsible for illegal activity. And without being able to know who directly lit the firework, we decided that we would make the person in charge of that property culpable. So one quick way is to is to create an ordinance, put in the ordinance that, that the commercial or the non-residential business, however you want to describe it, church is a church commercial, is responsible to make sure that the food trucks meet the ordinance, have the permit, assuming that the definition of catering becomes not prepared food out of a food truck that the individual patron doesn't taste good.
So we're talking about business.
Right, so if outskirts has, has a pizza truck or off the griddle truck in their grassy area to feed people who come to the bar, because they all have their own kitchen, and the truck is charging the people that come up. If outskirts allows a non-permitted business to do that, the business itself, the truck is in violation and so is outskirts. That's one way to stop outskirts from doing.
Yes.
They'll force the off the griddle to get the permit.
That's a good idea.
But if.
Sounds pretty reasonable.
But if outskirts is rented out by a person who's gonna have their birthday party there and off the griddle shows up and and the host is gonna pay one bill at the end of the night, if that is the definition of catering, then outskirts nor off the griddle require that permit. If that's not the definition of catering, then the permit would be required.
It doesn't boil down to catering.
Right, you.
It depends on the definition of catering.
It doesn't, though. You explained to me that it's.
It's not, that's not, catering does anything to do with it. It's a matter of whether the sales are being made to the public.
Yeah.
And if there are no sales going on such as it's a catered event, I mean, it's no different than, you know, I, I I don't think a situation like that, like if it was at my house, whether I hired a hot dog truck to get hot dogs to my friends and neighbors who came to my party, or whether I was grilling hot dogs out back, it doesn't matter.
So, and maybe the answer is to not use the word catering and make a term or a phrase to describe that.
Well, I think that's.
Not individual sales.
So what, when Jim explained it to me, he said it's kind of your, as you're reading through the ordinance, if they meet this, you keep going. And that the ordinance continues to apply to them. The way you explained it to me is because it's, they're not selling, it means they're not defining under that ordinance.
You, you gotta get through number, section three, number one, saying it shall be unlawful for any person to engage in the sale of food or beverages to the public. Okay, and if, get through that where they're actually making the individual sales to the public, then there are certain exceptions to that. So even though they are making sales to the public, the exceptions are A through D. And that, that's where you start talking about all the different exceptions, catering businesses, grilling food preparation activities. You know, that's, yeah, I don't think you get to question the exception unless they're already selling. And I guess I've always looked at it from the standpoint that if they're not selling, you don't look at those exceptions. And I think that's the way court would look at it, too. I mean, you could make.
Right.
Yeah, you could try to make an argument that, okay, the owner of the real estate that's having the party is buying it and it's being served to the public in general. I don't think that would pass. We could certainly, we could clarify it.
Could you clarify, so in seat, eight C, says mobile food, food unit should only be allowed on non-residential properties except for block parties or private catering arrangement. Could you put after private catering arrangement parenthetical or something that says, which means no outside sales to the general public or something like that, just.
Yeah, we, we could clarify that up in definitions, too, if we wanted to. Yeah.
I would also ask that we either use the term food truck throughout the ordinance or don't define food truck. You notice we have the definition of food truck, but food truck is never said anywhere else. It's called mobile food unit.
That's because there's three different types of mobile food units.
Food stand, food truck, yeah.
And I also, we had a discussion, I think, yesterday about city-sponsored events and whether or not, I mean, what's the definition of city-sponsored? And I came up with the word endorsed. Is Music Fest city-sponsored? Yes or no? Is July fourth party in the park city-sponsored? It's definitely city-endorsed.
It's co-sponsored.
There's a permit, there's permits, so obviously it's endorsed.
Right, right.
Co-sponsored.
So Music Fest, we helped financially. We are helping financially, yeah. Question for Greg, on this slide that's showing up there, I guess it doesn't have to be Greg, this could be Lindsay or Paris. There's a list of things that you go through and look at, a vehicle registration, photographs of the food unit. Can you describe a couple of scenarios where you would not approve a license?
I think, I, I mean, I know one initially that we didn't approve was wanting to locate at the church south of Pyro. And they had obtained their letter from Pyro saying they would do that and Pyro would not sign off on that, and so we denied that.
Okay, sounds fair.
Lindsay asked me this exact question in Four Wheels, and so she got their permit. She said, why do we need a background check? What would, what, what would that do? Cause the ordinance requires them to provide a criminal history. This police or the city can't go get it out of the computer ourselves in this instance. But the person applying can get their own criminal history and turn it into us. So we have them do that. And she said, well, what are you looking for? Like, well, you know, one of those, I'll know it when I see it, but, you know, somebody who had multiple fraud convictions, sex offender convictions, you know, I don't want a food truck to operate with, with the cook that's got, that's been adopting children, that sort of thing. So there's no bright line, but if there was enough criminal evidence to say that this is not a person we want to operate in a mobile environment, then I would deny the permit. But the ordinance gives them the ability to appeal that. If, if the denial is not to their liking, they can appeal it above us. But so the, for what I'm looking for would be those things. If the truck wasn't safe, you know, if the truck's gonna fall apart, that sort of thing. And then I imagine if we knew that the knew that their plan was to dump the grease in cornfield, we deny it until they have their plan, that's what's.
For me, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
I don't pass it on until I have everything on this list. So it could have all but one, and it's gonna sit on my desk until that one thing is turned in. So most recently, the people that decided to not come here and one other, I did have to say, your insurance doesn't meet the requirement of what our ordinance says. The damage, it was, it was too low of an amount. So fix this, then come back. So I don't give it to Paris or Greg until it is one hundred percent complete. And then the other thing I did want to mention is if we're going to amend the ordinance, I think Jen is in favor of adding a fire inspection to the mobile food unit, correct?
That's standard for most cities. West Des Moines, Des Moines, they all have their mobile units inspected by the fire department.
And do they have to do that annually with the license?
Mm-hmm, with a license.
How physically do they do that? They drive to the, make an appointment with you? How does that work?
Yeah, so, well, we had, quite honestly, Four Wheels contacted us when they first came to the city because some of the other cities require the inspection. They expected it, yes. They had contacted us to see how we could go about scheduling that inspection. It wasn't in place for us yet, but we could, you know, we're there twenty-four hours a day, just like Greg, so we could send somebody out when it's convenient for them. No different than when we do commercial inspections now during the day or as convenient for the customer, so.
Luke, I just wanted to point out one other thing. In the ordinance, section three point nine does have property owner responsibility. So by allowing, it states that by allowing a mobile food unit on their property, they are also responsible for compliance with the chapter.
So does that cover what you mentioned, Greg? Cause I've got that noted to add that in here, or to add the property hosting the food truck can be held responsible.
It's section three subsection nine of the ordinance.
I think it does.
Yeah. Do you think that covers?
Sure, sounds like it. I agree with the fire. Inspection, that is across the board, everything on the checklist.
How about the pro-rata piece?
I think that.
Taking it just by quarter, I mean, making.
Example, we do that on our compost tips. That always drives me nuts. First time, it's like in September, I get it and it still costs me a hundred and twenty bucks. I get two months worth of.
I think that's fair to the businesses that would be getting the permits, but also fair to us, so. I've got that.
Proration, did you, did you want to consider seasonality at all in that proration? Just because, you know, spring through fall is gonna be, winter, I don't know that there's gonna be any.
Yeah, there's not. I think you pick a timeframe. You guys decide. So if you say January through May, or January through April thirty, if anybody that's gonna do business, it's gonna be at two fifty for the year, if it's May through June, just pick whatever. I don't.
But make sure it covers your costs.
But yeah, I mean, but like I said, don't make it exactly, you know, it's two fifty to start with, it's two fifty, two hundred, one fifty, one hundred, cause then you're still. Somebody may come in in the fourth quarter and be only planning to get a one to three day license and say. Cause then you're still, somebody may come in in the fourth quarter and be only planning to get a one to three day license and say, well, for $25 more, I can get one for the rest of the time, just in case I do a second attempt. That might make sense to them to do that at that point, but.
Okay.
And then they might turn around and do a full license, I don't know.
You still want to offer a temporary, one or two, three day? A lot of the cities I did not see have that. You're either in or you're out. And Des Moines is like 17.
I, one thing I will tell you is that typically our fees are based on time associated with doing the review to give the permit. We're not making profit from $250.
Right, that's my point. I'm worried about $75. You're going through all the same hassles for $75 versus 250. I don't see that.
What if, what if you did it on an annual basis, set up a calendar year, just like liquor license or commercial inspections that we're doing now? Cause it is, we keep track, we're keeping track of liquor license and our commercial fire inspection, things of that nature. That way it's like, Wayne and I were just saying, it's the same staff time, whether it's two months left in the year or.
It would sure save the, if it, if this were to flourish more, it would sure save January 1, 10 people coming in with a permit.
That's true.
That really comes down, Lindsay, you and Paris primarily, on how you guys feel about that. As long as there's one person tracking and notifying whoever that they need to renew their license by whatever. Do we notify people that they have a license expiring? We do.
I mean, I've only had to notify one, but yeah.
There you go.
Cigarette.
No, they get letters, the ABD handles alcohol. But I do notify the mobile food vendor and massage therapists of their license.
But it's expiring.
Yeah, so I would prefer actually it be not calendar year.
And I don't have any stake in that. I think that was just, you know, we cobbled together multiple ordinances and whatever city we liked their payment method from, that's kind of what it was.
Well, and it would fix the proration. I mean, we would, you start this day and you go through the next year.
Or the first, first day of county, if they come in on the 20th of the month, it's the first of the prior month. I, I don't care.
Yeah, I would probably always like end it that, the end of the month that they came in.
That would take, that makes that easier.
Yes.
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 Yeah, there probably.
No proration based on license date.
You get more in there.
And let's do a fire in the very day. I, like you said, $75 are going through all the same effort to work. As the two, why do you even offer that?
Right.
That's nuts. I didn't see any temporary in any other city that I looked at.
I just have one other question. Under the definition of terms, which defines food stand, which to me defines tropic snow or whatever that Stockholm place is called. Do they have to get a permit? Do they have to get a license? Do they have a license?
We viewed tropic snow as a non-mobile thing because they, they're hooked into electrical service. And, yeah. I mean, but also we, we permitted that at a time. We, we permitted that at a time when we didn't have this ordinance. So the kind of way we viewed that was not really even accessory use, just a secondary use of the Ace Hardware property for a commercial restaurant place. I'd ask Jim that question.
If they moved, if they're, they are mobile by being by the skids, that's why they're not.
Well, we could, we could certainly use that definition.
They're mobile, period.
But that being said, it's also hooked up to permanent utilities.
And so, a lot of times we'll run power cords to the.
We could certainly make the argument, if we wanted to go after tropical snow, say you're mobile and you're getting.
I'm just saying, we're trying to be consistent.
But we could also certainly make the argument that they're permanent because they're on a permanent electrical hook up and it hasn't changed for years.
They used to be out of Pyro.
Yeah, but.
In other days.
Yeah, through, yeah, they moved about three or four years ago, but, I mean, so, yeah, I agree with you. We could make that our, when we can make the argument the other way too. And I guess up till now, we've chosen to make the argument the other way.
Their structure is temporary, otherwise they would be charged property tax, right?
Right, you know, there's different definitions of what makes things permanent.
Is that the deal when they comment? The Iowa food and truck.
Clayton, would you come on up and state your name and address?
Sorry, Clayton Garrison, 1711 Dorchester Street, Norwalk. The Iowa Food and License Code, and I sent this to Luke and I've sent this to Holly, states that a mobile food unit means a food establishment that is self-contained, with the exception of a griller smoker located outside the unit and used for cooking, readily movable, which either operates up to three consecutive days at one location or returns home to home base of operation at the end of the day. That's a mobile food unit as defined by the state of Iowa for their food and health inspection that's on their website. Push cart means a non-self-propelled vehicle, tropical snow. Food establishment limited to serving non-potentially hazardous foods or can, commissionary wrapped foods. I think the ice cream guy who sells stuff that's frozen, he came up as a peddler, maybe. He would operate as a push cart by the state's definition at proper temperatures or pre-cooked foods that are required limited assembly, such as Frankfurters is what the state says, hot dogs. That is state definition on the food inspection website. Make that comment as relevant to what you're talking about now.
Thanks for saying that.
I'm not going after tropical snow. I just was wondering why we define food stand, I mean, where else do we have a food stand? We're just for future reference, if anybody wants to.
Trying to be all encompassing, following what other communities had done.
Am I hearing, yes, we're asking props note to license or we're not?
I should know because.
I'm hearing we either need to remove that mobile food unit definition part of it out, or we need to make them on the ice cream guy's license. That's what I'm hearing. Cause to me, I, I don't know that we've, if they, if they fit that definition, which they have to maintain the ice cream at a certain temperature.
I don't think we got that.
I'm saying, I, I think that our definition should either match the state or they shouldn't.
How can the ice cream man not be considered selling, I mean, meeting all of the other definitions?
The, so the, the main thing that differentiates between if you're a food vendor, a mobile food unit, so, you know, food trucks is one type of that, but so we talk food trucks kind of generally, but the code talks about a mobile food unit. The main thing that differentiates any one of those three types is are you preparing it or not? If, if I'm driving around in my truck and I'm selling cans of Coke, I'm not preparing anything. If I'm driving around my truck and I'm making daiquiris, I've prepared something and I'm, I'm selling it. If I'm, if I'm making, I was trying, trying to find some kind of other beverage that would meet that, David. Sandwiches, you know, prepackaged sandwiches, you know, but most people don't do that, right? The, the one that you see all the time is ice cream, ice cream sandwiches, popsicles, all that stuff. It's prepackaged. You're selling it out of the freezer. The rolled ice cream though, I mean, you've got ice cream, but you're doing something to prepare that to then sell to somebody. As a food truck, very similar type businesses. One meets the food truck because it's preparing something, the other does not.
So, so I'm saying we take the state's definition of the three types of mobile food units, and I think that we've either got to enforce it on all of them, or we've got to pick which piece we want to pull out. Honestly, that's where I'm, I, I think pulling the state's definitions and.
I, I think ours is pretty close to the state's definition.
But if we, if the state changes their definition, if we just say that we're gonna follow the state's definitions and the state changes their definitions for their licensing, then it's not on us to go back and fix our ordinance and change our, this is me trying to simplify things down.
But it also means that we would have to comply with the state's definition too.
The, the ice cream man is licensed. He has a permit from the city.
He's a peddler though.
To sell his ice cream. And the difference between him and everything else we're talking about is he's going door to door all across the city. He's not stopped. And so he meet, he's more of a peddler. Instead of knocking on the door, he's playing his loudspeaker to get people to come out of their house. The ordinance, if he's a mobile food vendor, he can't play the loudspeaker because it's prohibited. But I don't get, I don't disagree that, that what he's doing meets most of this definition. But we permit him as a peddler because he's moving all the time.
Right.
Versus coming and stopping for several hours.
Right.
I, I guess I would request that the city follow state guidelines and match your definition to the state.
I think we review those definitions, but I don't think we want to commit to using those exactly. But I don't think any of us have looked that up close enough to figure out exactly how that will affect our ordinances and the wishes of the council. We spent a lot of time discussing what the wishes and council are, trying to narrow it down. I think, so I'm not saying don't use definitions, but I would certainly like a chance for myself and staff to read those definitions and determine whether it's gonna.
I think I had sent them to Luke too, saying that this is, we should just follow that definition and, and figure out. Even if we pick that definition they have today and then modify whatever you want it to, I think.
But I think a lot of our definitions have matched up pretty well.
Yeah, I think it's pretty close. I think you took it from there to begin with. It's just a matter of.
I wouldn't even give myself, I'm sure you took it from, city applied, but I took it from.
That probably took it from somebody else.
I think it's okay. What are the questions do the staff have about this?
How does everyone feel about the word permit instead of license? Big deal, permit sounds.
So I had a question on the criminal history checks quick. So do you pull that on the owner or everybody that works for the owner? Or do they pull that on themselves?
We've only done it once and employees were the owners.
Okay.
So.
So if the employees weren't the owners, what would you do? This is me just asking.
We would, if I knew that the owner was never gonna, well, I would check the owner, or I'd have the owner provide that. The ordinance doesn't say this. It just says provide criminal histories. I don't think it says on every employee, does it? You know?
This is me just saying, I think we need to clarify that, that piece of it because.
A mobile food vendor is the person, corporation, entity, or group obtaining the license to prepare, market, or sell food from the unit. So I would assume it's the employees that will be working there is who we need the background check on.
Every time their employees change, they have to provide a new background check? This is me asking, cause.
Every, well, we would, we would require it every year with license. Yeah.
Does the city require Wins Pizza and Pyro to verify their employees for the background check and provide that to you?
Oh.
This bill is to protect those businesses. So implementing that, you'd have to require the same of your business as you're trying to protect. And the employee like labor market, if any of you own businesses or run a business or work for a business, you know that turnover is high, especially in the food industry. Good luck mandating that.
And that's, that's where I'm asking that question. So I think we just need to clarify who we're getting the background criminal history checked from. I will say one difference, so our peddlers permits, there's a background check that's similar to that, that's required. A big difference between the food trucks and those businesses are, these are more typically instances where the food trucks are going out into the community versus somebody going into that store. So it's taking a little bit more care of the interaction of a business going out and going closer to where the citizens are.
The very nature of it is, well, I mean, it can be packed, it can pack up and go in a minute.
And steal a kit, yeah.
It's, the thing is, that is a good point of, you know, if you're looking to protect your citizens or patrons, it's certainly a valid point. But just again, going back to peddlers, people typically going up, knocking on doors. There's a little bit more close interaction with people that aren't looking for that person.
The code states it's the applicant who has to provide the criminal background check.
So it's just, just the applicant.
Yep.
So a peddler does not have to get a background check and submit a permit?
Yes, yeah, yeah, the police department runs the background check on a peddler.
And it has to be for all the people that are everywhere.
All right, what else?
Thank you.
I have some additional comments or questions, I guess. I am in favor, and I talked with Brian about this earlier. I think I talked with Lindsay, I'm sorry, I'm on my way today. I talked with Lindsay about this. My name's Clayton Garrison. I own Norwalk Seasonal Services. I also own grounds around town. And we are in the process of applying and making sure we're following the rules. But I am in favor of a proration. We pay for our state health inspection license once a year. I did not like the idea of paying certain fee and then coming back three months later and paying another fee. As a principle, it's not amount of money. It could be a thousand dollars, it could be three dollars. I don't want to pay you three dollars and two months later come back and pay you another three dollars for the same thing. I get nothing more out of it. This is a new law, X, Y, and Z.
We're just gonna go yearly. So if you pay, if you pay July the first, you'll pay again on July the first.
And, and I would say that when we fix this ordinance, because we aren't doing that tonight, we're just working on it. When we actually fix it, I think that we need to include grandfathering in existing licenses to be for 12 months.
For 12 months from their license date.
So that if you were to do it in the interim before we fix it.
Yeah.
I think that then we can take care of, because I think that's a valid concern across the board. And that's, that was my intent when, when I heard yearly license was that it was for 12 months, not necessarily for a calendar year. I didn't think about that at the time. It's a fix that we can fix and make it so that.
I appreciate that consideration. Again, it's not about the dollar, it's about the principle. We pay for something, you should get to use that, or you should, you know, pay your insurance, appropriate your insurance. My, I don't, I won't say concern, but my thought about this, and I'm, I'm more specifically speaking about something that brought up Madison Kuhn owns part of, does own help with Fo' Wheels. Her and her husband own Fo' Wheels. But I think there's kind of a double edged sword here where I like this protection. I like the background checks. I like having people who come here, make sure that the city, make sure that they have a food license, which they're supposed to before they even show up. But I think you kind of play a double edged sword here with trying to protect businesses that may be struggling due to COVID or whatever. And this is kind of when this has come about, it's really come to press after COVID. Businesses are struggling and they're seeing mobile food units who are doing well, and they're saying, well, I'm not doing so well. That's just my take on it, right? That's an opinion. But I think you play a double edged sword where you require businesses to go through these steps, especially on a short notice. I think there was something brought up about 10 days. I don't know who said that, but I think there was something about 10 days. If you don't have it within 10 years of your event, you can't come.
Is there a?
The 10 days is it the, your application needs to be turned in to meet the 10 days prior to your first event?
I would be, I would be careful about that when you're planning these city events that are city sponsored and you're having trouble finding people to come support your city event to help the community grow. And you're trying to find vendors at the very last minute. Summerfest, Fourth of July. Very good. Thank you for correcting me. But you, you play a double edged sword here where myself, I've gone to Holly and I've said, hey, where's Atlanta, Norwalk, where can I buy? We've done events last week for the Norwalk Ministerial Association. We did events for the Norwalk Food Pantry. We did Girl Scout Cookies. We're doing a school drive this next weekend. You play a double edged sword where you have businesses who want to be brick and mortars coming into town, but there's either no lease space for us, the lease space is too high, or the construction costs are too high right now to justify building, a building, and even if you have a tenant, the lease costs are higher than a Georgia brick because of the construction cost. So in Fo' Wheel situation, I've talked to them. They come to the city and people get mad and whatever, whatever. We'll go to Carlisle, we'll go to Pleasant Hill, we'll go to the city that accepts us. We'll sell our stuff, we'll still be busy, we'll build our brand and we'll build our brick and mortar there. Your land is high, your construction costs are high, can't build right now, it doesn't make sense. Kind of playing a double edged sword there. So I would just think about that. I think businesses like when they opened the flower shop and the whatever up there, is it Orthodontist? I saw those businesses and I was like, well, no one called us, that's okay. I would have priced it no, but I didn't recognize them. They're the name, they aren't the normal ones. They aren't the normal ones that are here, right? So I'm, I'm on board with, with those coming. But at the same time too, I'd be careful not to diminish the businesses that want to be here, that want to help in the community, to serve the community. To maybe be a brick and mortar someday. I would be careful not to diminish their interest in that, to go to another city where things are maybe more favorable. Or the lot prices are cheaper, or there's available lease space. I would just be careful about that while you're trying to, trying to protect the businesses that are here, that may be bringing up these concerns due to their financial status during recent times.
So. And just, you know, we did this all pre, we started this all pre-COVID, correct? This goes back to late nineteen, early twenty, right?
Yeah, I mean, we started, we had an ordinance drafted probably summer of nineteen and.
COVID has nothing to do with this. It's purely just COVID has brought out the like that we aren't enforcing what we had in the books. And that was, just so you know, that's what I've been pushing for, some sort of enforcement on this, because we either need to do it or drop the whole thing and not have it. That was kind of where I was with it, so.
Fine with paying the fee and playing along and doing all that, but at the same time, also understand that our businesses that want to be brick and mortars here. But, you know, you don't have grants for new businesses to open a brick and mortar. You only have grants for businesses that are currently open to renovate their shops. Or you don't have enough incentive to justify the increase in construction costs to build a brick and mortar to start a business in that manner. We started January of twenty twenty, the day we opened, the chamber announces Mahalo's coming. We're now a chamber member on grounds around town, but at the same time, we're all kind of, I don't want to say we're fighting for the same piece of pie, but don't diminish the people who might want to build a brick and mortar by throwing a bunch of fees and other stuff on them. I like the idea, but just keep that in mind that there are businesses who may want to start small through a mobile coffee truck or peddler or something to taste and see what people's interests are and kind of build their brand so that they can build a brick and mortar later.
I have a feeling Holly's wheels are turning right now and she's thinking, what if we said the past five years of fees paid for mobile food truck get applied towards a grant?
Well, you know, when we've been talking about this, we did talk about, do we make some sort of a temporary ability for people who do have a future plan, they really do want to build here, they have that in their pro forma. Do we make a temporary situation, like they get a one year or a two year, but after that two years, they can't just continually operate in the same location? Because then that is just a food truck just doing their thing, right? But if they have a long term plan, do we figure out a way to make it a little bit more feasible for them? But I mean, it is high, costs are very high, we know that. And I personally, on the business side of it, I don't mind food trucks at events, of course, or you know, if another business wants to have a catered event, I don't have any problem with that because it's a free market, you know? People have, all of our businesses have the opportunity to go out to these other businesses and say, hey, remember that we cater here and we're here. You know, we, the free market kind of takes care of itself in those areas. But yeah, with Clayton, I mean, it is kind of a, it's a hard thing, because unless you're building a larger development, the incentives that we have in place for new construction, which we do, but it's not just a straight grant for a small building or a small business to put up a small building. So that there's kind of some middle ground there where we are not really able to cover at this time.
Yeah, yeah, the market, the market does not favor the small business right now, as far as trying to start fricking more, you need to buy a lot north of the car wash and build six unit, whatever, and try and figure it out, or just sit where you're at, so. Land prices are not your fault, but they are high in Norwalk, taxes are high, water's high, and we're all paying it. But it's just not a, a environment that's conducive to a small food truck who wants to be in brick and mortar, building that right now. So just ask and keep that in consideration.
I got one more thing. I'm sorry. Right, right now, the ordinance is wide open on fees, because we, originally we put together, we were picturing going to court and having the judge set a fine. So it doesn't have a stated fine. I'd like to have stated fine and everything. We talked about doing municipal citations where we pay at City Hall. So I guess I would suggest something like, you know, first fence, second fence, and third and subsequent fence.
First fence, two fifty, second fence, five hundred.
Should be higher than the cost of the license.
Five hundred, double the cost of the license, first fence.
Whatever, it should be more than.
No, not first. The first fence, you're paying the cost of the license for the fence, and then you're paying for a license again, so you're doubling it up already. But that's, I'm getting to the five hundred of that.
I would like, I would suggest that the amount be enough to make a point, but not enough that makes people want to go to court and argue about it. Five hundred is probably above that, right? Two hundred to two fifties.
Well, if Michael's honest goal would be is that we would be giving them a warning before their first offense. The first offense is technically the second time.
I would definitely say that that warning would be used every time. Holding out that there may be a time where it's not used, but I would say that it is.
So then that way, the fine is equivalent to the license and they might as well just can pay the license fee to begin.
Right.
If they choose not to, the second time that they.
Then they shut down and leave anyway.
Two fifty, five hundred?
And it doesn't count towards the cost of the license, so they don't get a license.
Right. And then we can talk about it. We'll set it at that, and then we can talk about it again when we talk about the ordinance.
There you go. All right, maybe we could have one of them.
You got anything else, Jeff? Nope, that's it. Are you sure? I can think of something now.
Get moving on. Item five, welcome, guests, and public comment. Welcome to the meeting. Appreciate a public being here. We'll go ahead and open the dais if you want to address counsel for a non agenda item. Three minute time limit to address counsel. We can't take action on those items tonight for what you want to talk about, since they aren't on the agenda. Also, if you'd like to comment on any item in the consent agenda, now would be the time, so. Counsel. Hearing none, we'll move on. Item six is a consent agenda. We have approved the August fifth, twenty twenty-one minutes of the regular city council meeting. We have expenditures, tax abatements. We have renewal of Class C liquor license with Sunday sales for Elmia Mexican Restaurant at twenty-three fifty-one Sunset Drive, Suite one oh five. We have a new five day Class B beer permit without our service and Sunday sales from Rock Area Chamber of Commerce, nine oh seven North Avenue. We have renewal Class C liquor license without our service and Sunday sales for outskirts, eighty-three eighty-four South Arilla Road. Have an event, event application for the twenty twenty-one Rock Music Fest for September fifth, twenty twenty-one. A resolution approving fiscal year twenty-one street finance report. A resolution appointing Lauren McMeans to the library board. A resolution approving the use of the CARES Act funding for IT equipment through the state buy it program. A resolution ordering construction of certain public improvements, the Northwest Service Area Truck Sewer Extension. Approving preliminary plans and fixing a date for hearing thereon and taking bids therefore. We have resolution approving the disposal of identified equipment and materials through gov deals. A resolution to approve pay us but number one to progressive structures for Windflower and Sharon Heights Neighborhood Drainage Improvements Project. And monthly reports and correspondence. Okay, a motion by Cool, second by Reba. Lindsay, would you call the roll?
Councilmember Lester?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Reba? Cool.
All right, that motion carries. Item seven is older new business for consideration, discussion, and possible actions. So item A is a public hearing regarding the Great Western Trail Connection Phase Two project. So what about public hearing at seven twenty P M? Robin, would you like now present this to counsel? Maybe?
Sure, I can. Do you want me to come up there or sit here?
As long as you got the mic in front of you.
Oh, you got my.
All right, so phase two is the section that will begin just west of the inlet to Lake Colchester. So we have a small portion there that's circled in red. It will include a second bridge, which will be similar to the one that we just installed there on Fiftieth. And then the trail will continue east to Clearwater Drive. This, the partial funding for this was a Transportation Alternatives Program grant through the MPO. And that was for a hundred thousand. And that has been bid, we've received bids back. And that information is in the rest of the resolutions that follow, so.
All right. Lindsay, have we received any oral or written comments on this item?
We have not.
All right, any other public comment? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and close public hearing at seven twenty-one P M. Item B is resolution approving and confirming plans, specifications, formal contract, and estimates of cost for the Great Western Trail Connection Phase Two project. So we just had a public hearing on this item. This is the first of the three resolutions needed to get this project moving. Robin, you got anything else to add?
No, just that the project came in close to what estimations were. Given that prices are pretty high, we were, we were happy with what we saw, so.
What was the final bit number in total?
Five twenty-seven.
I want to make sure that was, I thought that's what it was, but I want to make sure. And we had estimated five seventy, so.
Any other questions or discussion?
Question, I, I don't remember, as I sit here. Was there a crossing or anything that's involved as part of that?
Yes, so the D E T is recommending and is included in their drawings that they would like to put a crossing in there at Clearwater, so the crossing will be on the east side of Clearwater.
Thank you.
So, okay. And it should, should be in that packet, didn't we?
It's, it's in there, because of the government piece of it all.
It's very long, yes.
It is very long.
It was not all as quite as evident as normal.
Do you have any public comment? Okay, I got a motion by Reba, second by Lester. In further discussion. Hearing none, Lindsay, which call?
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Reba?
Yes.
Cool?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
All right, motion carries. Item seven C is a resolution warning contract for the Great Western Trail Connection Phase Two project. This is the second of the resolutions needed to get the project moving. Anything else to add?
No.
All right, any questions or discussion from counsel? So I got a, I got a motion by Lester, a second by Reba. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Lindsay, which call?
Councilmember Reba?
Yes.
Cool?
Yeah.
Lester?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
All right, item seven D is resolution program contract and bond for the Great Western Trail Connection Phase Two project. This is the third and final resolution. Robin doesn't have anything else to say? Any discussion with counsel or public comment? All right, motion by Reba, second by Lester. Lindsay, which call?
Councilmember Cool?
Yeah.
Lester?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Reba?
Yes.
All right, motion carries.
Thank you.
Item seven E is a resolution to approve a contract for city engineer services with Easter and Kim and corporate. Being cared currently contracted as our city engineer, and this is a renewal contract. Wayne, I want to say here if you got anything.
Sure, thank you. As the agenda statement says, we solicited RFQs in two thousand nineteen. We got some middle stack from B and K Snyder Associates, Chy Padre, Bolton and May, and both. We had a committee put together, council members, Baker and Livingston were on it, Lindsay, Robin, myself, and Luke. So we interviewed three firms. At the end of that, the committee recommended to renew again with Easter and Kim. One of the reasons we chose them was their expertise with subdivisions. They've been really good at reviewing the plaids, working with developers, they have good relationships with the school, with city staff. One of the primary inspectors lives in town, Tony lives in town, and that's a huge bonus. Going through the interviews, some of the staff with the other firms weren't, they weren't very impressive, so. We are recommending to go with B and K, there's a contract included. Man, I'm not sure if Tony's on the call, but I'm sure he'd be happy to answer any questions with that, and I'll, I'll try.
Any questions for Wayne or for Tony? All right, any public comment? A cool second by Baker, any further discussion? Hearing none, Lindsay, which call?
Councilmember Lester?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Reba?
Yes.
Cool?
Yes.
All right, motion carries. Item seven F, resolution proving the use of American Rescue Plan Act ARPA funds. So we received our first installment with the American Rescue Plan funds, and we like to use that money to tackle some water projects in the community. Gina, Wayne, I'll just take that.
I can start, and then you want to chime in, that'd be great. We received confirmation that we'll get one million seven hundred and seventy-nine thousand from the American Rescue Plan Act. We've received half of that already. I'm supposed to receive the other half next year around the same time. We had looked at the different projects, infrastructure, water, sewer, were a couple of the approved uses. We looked at the C I P, and this is a, this East Twenty-seventh Water Main, Wright Road, East Twenty-seventh Water Main is an active project in our current year. We thought upsizing the main to the east would help set us up for future growth and also help with fire protection during heavy use times. It's kind of hard to get water to that area. So this was kind of a project we thought would just fit well within, within the use of the funds. Wayne, do you have anything to add?
No, any questions?
Have some. I was just wondering of the, all the projects that are on the C I P, I didn't think this one was on the C I P, but we have the finishing the main coming in from coming, we have water tower, which is mentioned. We have the sewer work that's being done by the certified sites, to bring that up. Since those are already on our list and they're within the city limits, and this is not in the city limits. Why was this chosen? What other projects were considered when that one was landed on?
That's true. This one, I'm not sure if this isn't, or if it was in the last published C I P, this is something we added after the hydrant flushing issue last year. So we have McClure model, we had to identify where there were zones of low pressure, we had to do that oil advisory. So going to that modeling, we were trying to identify how it happened and what we can do to avoid it. They recommended installing a new twelve inch water line, going through the community on North Avenue. And then I proposed to them, I said, that's just problematic with being North Avenue and how busy it is. I ran, I proposed we do it on Coolidge or Wright Road, knowing there's going to be development there, and we don't have any water being there now. They ran their model, they said that is as effective running it on Coolidge as it would have been on North Avenue. So I feel like we're accommodating future growth as well in that spot. The other projects that would have been considered probably would be, I would recommend the next leg of the Western Peter Main, going from Fiftieth over to the water tower.
But this, I mean, Coolidge Road isn't in state limits, so we're spending money, we're spending a million five on a project that's not within the city limits, although it ultimately benefits the city. It's not part of the city now, so why would, why, why does this project? Why was this one picked over something that is in city limits like that, increasing, finishing the last part of the theater?
Yeah, like I said, I think the main reason is when we had that large release of water, it drained all the water mains on that side of town. It is outside of the little city limits, but that was mere of more of just me not wanting to do it on North Avenue and just relocating it down there.
And will we, will we own this, or will the county have ownership of it, or how does that work?
We would own it, and then I would propose, so looking at the aerial, we have that, we do have Santeri Sewer right there. Going from North Avenue diagonally over to behind public works. That area is currently sewer bowl, we're going to be getting water nearby, that's a logical area to annex. Even over down to south of Coolidge, there's eastern three or four homes are sewer bowl. If we have water there, we could look at buying out the water rights and annexing it. Yeah, the water main being outside of copper limits was merely a ease of construction, not because we're trying to I'm not trying to, can't do the right, we're not trying to set that up necessarily for development. Let's try and just solve our problem, but that's just an ancillary benefit is if we do develop there, we have the water main.
But do we have the right of way to do that? Does the county have the right of way? I'm just trying to think, what are you going to have to coordinate to do this?
It would have to go in the it's not a city right of way, but there's easement there. The county should have easements there. It's kind of how Mid-Am has, currently has lines going down that. All the utilities are located there. We've done the same thing with the current phase of Western feeder main. It's in the right of way going to the county. It's not technically right of way, it's county roadway or utility easement. It'd be similar to that. We haven't done any design yet to know if any private easements.
The.
Is there, is there a, a timing when you need to get this project, this money spent? Because it's not engineered yet, and that usually takes a good year.
We actually have a decent amount of time. We have to decide by two thousand twenty-four how the funds will be spent and spend them by two thousand twenty-six. So we do have some time.
Government speed.
I know.
Would this line provide service for that property?
Federal government.
There. East of eighty to twenty-seven.
It, we're planning on terminating it at the Brody's Landing development that's out there now.
Okay, cool.
Go.
So it would provide service to Brody's Landing?
Right, we would put in with that water main.
Yeah.
So, so I'm going to piggyback off of Stephanie's quick. If you were to run it up North Avenue, you would have to tear up and all that jazz, correct?
Right, there's fiber optic. I don't know how much we have to tear up, but it's just a congested corridor, right?
And so you're moving it south, even though it's not in the city limits, you're moving it south to benefit the city limits. Correct. I'm just trying to follow. I, I agree. I think that's the better place for it, but I'm just wanting to make sure I follow that.
Just the ease of construction and speed of the project is why I initially moved it down there. North Avenue's been a construction zone for four years.
And you get the same benefit.
Right.
Whether it's at north or.
Actually, and, and it makes a lot of sense, actually, when you figure that we already have territory there in the east, we got to provide service to anyway, right? So I understand Stephanie's concern, and, and she brings up a very good point. But, you know, likely that area is going to be annexed anyway. I mean, I don't mean to surprise those people, but the odds are, right? Yeah. So it wouldn't necessarily be wasted money.
We could look, there's no design set, and we could look at running it on Coolidge over to Cherry Street. I mean, if there's a lot of heartburn, we can zigzag it up Cherry, maybe get easements from some of those private owners and somehow get it over there, or even go up to North Avenue.
There's not that much heartburn.
Fun.
I just, I was just questioning what the logic was of doing that versus one of the other projects. I do have a follow-up question, though, since it hasn't been designed. And since probably one day we will annex this, is there anything else you can think of that you would like to put in that ditch as long as you're digging it? Any kind of table, any kind of sewer line?
Kind of do it for future progress or something?
Yes.
So that as long as you got the ditch dug, you can, maybe we pay for it now to think what's coming in the future? Just to think about.
How much would it add to put in a two-inch conduit for fiber that's empty?
I can, I can give you a rough estimate now, if you.
It's probably something to know, I mean, at least ask as part of the interview. You'll see.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
What is it?
That would be a lot cheaper to put six dollars.
If you borrow it. Well, we'd be trenching it because.
Thank you.
I'd explore that at least, yeah. I'd explore that, adding something in that measure.
Any other questions from council? Comments? Any public comment?
The feeder that was mentioned from.
Clayton, can you step to the?
Come on up, sorry. Identify yourself.
Again?
Yeah.
Clayton Garrison, seventeen-eleven Dorchester Street. The feeder that was to go from eightieth to the water tower, is that to better serve blooming heights? Or is there water need in that development?
The line to go from maybe fiftieth to the water tower is just for additional capacity for the community, it's not for blooming heights.
Yeah. So there's ample supply for the developments that are plotted for Beardsley, Doc Brown's old place, all that as opposed to Brody's Landing?
There's a, there's an eight-inch water main along fiftieth and along Beardsley that will need to get upgraded at some point. Right now, the concern isn't that water main is not a concern right now, it's
Twenty twenty-four.
Ten years, maybe. I don't, depends on how fast the girl is, but it's not an issue right now.
All right, I get a motion to approve the resolution. Motion, second. A motion by Cool, second by Baker, any further discussion? Hearing none, Lindsay, which call?
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Reba?
Yes.
Cool?
Yeah.
Lester?
Yes.
All right, motion carries. Item seven.
One clarifying question for Jean. Side note completely. Will you check and see if the additional single audit yellow book costs that we'll have to have associated with this can come out of that funding?
I can't hear you. The additional what?
Yellow book, single audit expense. Just check.
Okay.
Because it threw us up over the.
Because that'll throw us over the, we'll have to have a required federal single audit next year, so.
Oh, yeah, we will, we will. I'm sorry, single audit, guys. Yes, we will have.
Have that additional cost on the audit, just to see if that extra piece since we're going to audit without a cost.
Okay, yeah.
That's minor.
Yeah, I told them.
A few thousand dollars.
It's at C T.
I mentioned it too. I will do that.
All right. Item seven G is resolution proving the nibble, nibble subdivision plat of survey. So this plat is south of Norwalk, actually up the hill and off of Urb Street, Erby Street in the county. However, it's within our halo, so we have to approve the plat. As indicated in the report, while this doesn't meet our thirty-acre requirement, this property does, really doesn't sit in any area that we have consideration for future annexation. So I personally agree with the staff report to let them go ahead and split it up. Luke, you got anything else?
Just to add that, normally you guys wouldn't see a plat of survey, but because it falls in that area that we added into our land use plan, just to call ag, to try and have a little bit more control over like big rural subdivision that might happen in the area. It's kind of an unintended consequence maybe of that. So it is a five-acre lot. It will create one house lot down there. It's on about ten acres of ground total, so you could technically deny it if you wanted to on the grounds of our comprehensive plan. That's why we can't staff approve it, so we brought it to you for your.
My two cents on this one is that I agree we should just go at this point because it's not in the fifty- or sixty-year annexation. Because of the sewer availability on that side of the river.
Right.
I, I would add with our new draft future land use plans, we're not really showing anything south of the North River. So, you know, our, we went, we did that kind of big jump out there just so that we could have some say in some things. In this one, I don't know that we need to have a say.
Any other comments? All right, any public comments? Hearing none. Can I get a motion? Motion? So motion by Lester, second by Baker.
The question is, isn't the, isn't our new city park in the city limits, didn't we?
I was, I was going to bring this up in the previous thing that, no. So that sewer line where it's planned is not within copper limits yet.
But yeah.
The plan is to get there. But it has not been. But it's not.
Okay. I, I assume that was the further discussion. All right.
Councilmember Reba?
Yes.
Cool?
Yeah.
Lester?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
All right, motion carries. Item seven H is resolution accepting infrastructure and approving the final plat of Brody's Landing plat two. So this is the plat located behind Bedwells. Wayne, everything look good to you?
Yeah, I guess one quick question, and just reading it now, it says there's a, we should normally get a letter from B and K that has a list of things we need to check. There was a lot of stuff to do there. Did we get a thing showing everything we need to get from them?
Thank you for bringing that up. I did not get that for the packet when the packet went out. I received that today about eleven-thirty. I checked with community development. They didn't have it, so they got ahold of Tony Belizzi, and he sent it to me today at eleven-thirty. So there is some punchless items on that letter.
Yeah, so if I, Mayor, if I could, this is Tony Belizzi, if I could add some comments to that. So we did, we did send that to the city today. Reason we were waiting is because there were several punchless items that needed to be completed on that before we could send that letter, final acceptance. Those items are now completed, so this is ready, in our opinion, for final acceptance. That's our recommendation in that letter. That letter did just come today, but those items are completed now, so, so that's, that's why we sent the letter. So apologize for the late, late date of that letter, received that letter by the city.
Good then. Luke, you got anything?
Nothing to add unless you've got questions over the details of the plat itself.
Right. Questions? Public comment? I get a motion to approve it. Okay, motion by Cool, second by Baker. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Lindsay, which call?
Cool?
Yeah.
Lester?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Reba?
Yes.
All right, motion carries. Item seven I, second reading of an ordinance submitting section ninety-two twelve water shortage in chapter one seventy-seven rates and fees of the Norwalk Municipal Code. So this is the second reading for a tweak to our water shortage ordinance to put it more in line with what we believe we'll need to do in the future during water shortages. Wayne, you got anything to? All right, any questions or discussion from council? Public comment? Yeah.
Clayton Garrison, seventeen-eleven Dorchester Street, Norwalk. May not be relevant, but something that has occurred in the past, suggestion in the interest of public safety to consider adapting requirement of individuals with irrigation system to submit a backflow check. Norwalk, to my knowledge, is the only city in the metro that does not require it. It is a small fee in most cities. There is a online database that keeps track of it, and that would provide additional funds for water mains, public safety when it's emptied. Becomes a public safety because their irrigation system is backflowing to the city. Which suggests the council can say that in the future.
We're already looking at that. B S I is a company that does it for Metro. Kalin's working on that with her recent illness. It's just been on the shelf, but we're, wheels are, wheels are emotional already for that.
Cool, there you go. All right, any other, other comments, questions from council? Can I get a motion? Second, all right. Motion by Reva, second by Cool. I don't know, slow tonight. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Lindsay, which call?
Councilmember Lester?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Reba?
Yes.
Cool.
Yes.
All right, motion carries. Item eight, council queries and staff updates. Luke?
I just have a couple of quick items. The first one, our taxpayer talk, Shelby, Shelby got that all done. If you recall, that was about water rates. And I thought she did an outstanding job pulling all that together, and thanks to A J for being a part of that. Next up, I believe Chief Staples is going to talk with somebody about speeding in town. Is that what the topic is going to be?
Potential.
Okay. So.
Next up might not be appropriate term.
So it'll be a similar type thing, talking about kind of one of those complaints that we typically get in residential areas with speeding. So it'll be a good topic. Second thing I had is it's that time again where I'd like to get together for one-on-ones with council. Kids are heading back to school, so I thought it might be a good time before budget season starts. What will be on the agenda? Again, these are individual lunch, coffee meetings, whatever works for council members. Council goal, follow-up, switch. Each person had their champion role in that vision twenty-twenty-eight, so we'll talk about those items. Probably basic update on projects, and then if you have any questions or concerns that you'd like me to tend to, that'd be a great time to talk about it.
Lindsay?
Nothing.
Right.
Um, August twenty-sixth, which is next Thursday, we will be doing ribbon cutting brand opening for Great Western Trail Phase One. And we're putting that invite together tomorrow. Sarah will be back in the office tomorrow, and you will all be receiving one, so hopefully you can come. That's all, yeah.
All right, thanks. Jean Strabel?
Nothing.
All right, Holly?
Um, just that September second, we will have the development agreement draft for the sports campus developers in front of you, so it's a big jump. We may even have the, the landowners development agreement draft in front of you on September second as well. Everybody's really trying to get this thing moving at rapid speed now that construction is on the timeline and people are trying to get up and running by spring in certain parts of the development, so anyways, it's very good.
Cool. Do we know what's going in next to Mahalo's?
Yes, they just haven't formally announced yet, but it's a service business.
Their, their car was sitting outside of it.
They did?
Their, their car was. Car was, what, there, there was a name on it, yes.
Okay.
What was the name?
It's super, I don't know, I.
Yeah, it was.
But their car was out there, then it's.
Their car was out there. And they were in and out of.
Then all of our retail buildings are full now. All the new buildings are full. So we have a few up and coming to be built in this next year, Clayton.
That's a, that's a good comment too about the need for retail space. I can attest to that.
Yes.
Yes, that, that's one area that we should.
Yeah, all right, thank you. Jean Kelly?
Auditors, we're here week of August second, and we're still doing follow-up on that. So far, so good. To answer your question that I could not hear for some reason earlier, we will be subject to a single audit, seven hundred and fifty thousand.
I, I know what I was asking is if the additional cost for that can come out of these months.
Oh.
If that's an allowed use for those, is it that three thousand or four thousand, because it's not going to be a.
I see what you're saying. Yes, I will check into that.
We're just going to have to pay more for a single audit, so my question was.
Right.
If, if we can pay forward out of that, let's, if not.
Okay. Good idea. I'll check into that. Working on several fiscal year-end reports, getting ready for the next budget cycle, can't believe I'm saying that. And put together a schedule for the two thousand twenty-one A bond issue process.
All right. Chief Staples?
It starts, school starts next week, and we have officers scheduled to be out for the schools to develop the traffic. And where repairs as needed. And Wayne has gotten Joe, I believe, to work to make sure the flashing signs and put up what your bills are, go in and ready.
Tim? School does that.
And Shelby is going to put out a reminder to drive carefully and be patient.
All right, thanks, Capport.
Couple of weeks ago, we sent four of our staff members to the Fire Department instructors conference where they took delivery of our new ambulance. So it's home right now. We're still short a little bit of equipment, so it'll be a couple of weeks before we're able to put it on the road, but another thing we did was we brought on Nate Lickkey, who's the pastor of New Life Lutheran Church. We brought him on as a chaplain for us. And so he's good, he's trained in peer support, so he's going to be available to our staff members on an as-needed basis. But we are going to include a blessing of the truck with the new ambulance in the pancake breakfast. So Nate's going to perform that ceremony, ceremony for us, and it's a kind of an exciting, if things normally happens in the fire service, so we're kind of excited about that ceremony. Pancake breakfast is September eighteenth. Yep, and that's homecoming weekend. Speaking of, I just picked the Saturday after homecoming. Some more information will be out on that as well.
Thank you. Wayne?
I just want to reiterate what Greg said, the school starting, talking to friends in the metro. Every school in the metro is going to have backup traffic. Everybody I talked to, their school backs up. It's not unique to Norwalk. It's not unique to any specific community or school. They're all backed up for the first week. Things will calm down. We're going to immediately get requests for four-way stop signs or traffic lights. We don't want to make any rushed decisions, just we'll look at it and C I P comes around, so. comes around, so that's it.
All right, thanks, Tony.
Thank you, mayor, as everybody knows, we've got a lot of subdivision work going on in the city, so just wanted to let the council know, we have, we anticipate about four more final plats coming to the council here, late summer or early fall, besides the Brody's Landing plat that we approved tonight, Holland Point, Blooming Heights, Timber View, and Shadow Creek Estates, so, so the, all of those are nearing construction of the infrastructure improvements. And then I just want to thank the council and the city staff for the opportunities to serve as your city engineer, it's been a privilege to serve the city staff and this council in my hometown, and, and look forward to it in the future, thank you, mayor.
Thanks, Tony. Luke?
I don't have a lot, we've been back for about twenty-two hours, so still getting back into the swing of things. Did want to note, though, with the trail project approval tonight, that, with that connection across Clearwater, that connects our Highway twenty-eight trail to the Great Western Trail, and that was a comp plan project, we worked on that going back, I think, to when Stephanie was B and Z chair, as part of one of our comp plan updates, trying to figure out the best route to get that done, so it's cool to see another kind of big goal being checked off from the community.
Yeah, it's a big project. Yeah, Nada? David?
Three, three little things, the WRA is currently reviewing their operating agreement, currently the operators are the city of Des Moines, and the agreement, and it's always being worked at, so. Wayne, I think you and I might get pulled into that a little bit, just to.
Sure.
I've expressed my displeasure with Des Moines a few times, so. The second piece on the WRA, they had received a grant, and they've been COVID testing the wastewater to see how much COVID is in it, and the results are available on their website, just sharing, okay, you don't have big cases. The last thing, and this is for all the elected folks up here, and maybe Luke can start doing this too, but I'm going to get a Google form where I want us, I'll say something positive periodically to all the departments, so that they can, I'll get with Luke and we'll make this work, so. So that they're getting positives from us, because I think sometimes we beat up on the council and you don't ever know that we actually appreciate. Just a heads up.
That's good. So is the city of Des Moines actually paying for the poop testing, or? Nobody's paying for.
Well, I take that back, the federal government's been providing money to pay for.
We're all paying.
We're all paying for it. And, and they, they were doing it because they were asked to join up, so just.
One comment on that. It is pretty cool, because the guy said it's a great way to track it, it's not everybody gets, not everybody knows they have COVID, and not everybody goes to get tested, everybody uses the bathroom, so it's an accurate way for them to track how bad things are getting in the metro, which is kind of a good point.
It's foolproof.
Chinese.
Let's leave them to county, they're going to catch you.
I just learned about this at the meeting on Tuesday, so.
Just trying not to say what I want to say. Jim? All right, I don't have anything. Especially after that. Item nine is closed session pursuant to Iowa Code Chapter twenty-one point five one J, to discuss the purchase or sale of particular real estate only where premature disclosure could be reasonably expected. To increase the price, the governmental body would have to pay for that property, Jim, valid reason to go in closed session?
This is.
All right, can I get a motion to move in closed? Okay, motion by Cool, second by Reba, Lindsay, which call.